The meeting is in order. Todd Tulkey is running just a little bit late, so he'll have to catch up when he gets here. So, Brian, are you ready?
Yeah, you bet. One of the topics that we've talked about for a while is school counseling services. And so, we thought we'd take some time today to do a little deeper dive into the counseling services that we provide, what those are, and just how we structure that within the district. So, here to go through that today is Tish Kala. She's new to the district. What better time for her to really think through what it is we're going to do than to put this production on for you? So, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. We're here today focusing specifically on high school counseling. My little team back here is the high school department chairs from each of the main high schools. So, from Roosevelt, we have Katie Hevlin from Washington, we have Patty Laitor, and Dave Myers from Lincoln High School. And they're each going to take a portion of the presentation. If you did get a handout, then that hopefully follows what we're going to be talking about. So, if we didn't, I think there might be some back there. Maybe grab some chorey or you figure out one on your way out. So, I will kind of kick things off in the introduction, and they're each going to talk about any part of our counseling program. High school counseling is kind of essential because it is kind of the last frontier before they hit the real world. And high school counselors are really essential because they are the people who are helping them make connections to things they may want to do after, what supports do they need now to even get out of high school, what paths they're going to take, do they need social emotional help, do they need academic help, do they need career guidance, whatever it may be. So, it's really important, again, to look at high school counseling as very all encompassing. I think a lot of people think of high school counseling back in the States, I just turned fifty-one this year, but back when I was in high school, they were the guidance counselors. And the guidance counselor did the ACT tests, and they helped you find a college to get into, and maybe wrote some recommendations for you. And that is not what counseling is anymore. They are not referred to as guidance counselors, they're referred to as school counselors. So, I just wanted to briefly talk a little bit about the essentials of high school counseling. So, it does encompass all of those things, and again, it is kind of their last shot to kind of learn those skills and get the right guidance before they hit the real world. Why counselors? Counselors are very specifically trained. They're all masters level people. They have to have an undergraduate degree, which could be in education or not, but they're masters level, they have a master's degree in school counseling. It is a pretty intense master's degree program. A lot of master's degree programs are thirty-plus credits. The masters in school counseling is a forty-two credit hourly program. So, it is more credits than a typical masters, and it is, again, very broad in a lot of different areas. There's classes in group counseling, there's classes in assessing individuals, there's classes in school counseling, there's classes in child development. There's a multitude of classes that help train counselors, again, to do their multitude of jobs. It's not just, I'm going to take a career counseling class and go help kids that way. As far as a role, basically, the job of these people and their partners that they work with in the schools is to provide a comprehensive program for the high schools. So, again, it's looking at not just at career guidance or just academic guidance, but looking at social emotional learning, and how does that all fit together, making sure that we're looking at prevention, intervention, crisis, general education, those types of things too. So, again, it's a multitude of things. It's not just sitting at your desk waiting for somebody to come in the door with a crisis. It's out there, what can we do to make sure that those crises aren't happening, whether it be career, academic, or social emotional learning. The goal of school counselors is really to engage the students in a lot of different areas with the support of the rest of the team at the school. So, they never operate in isolation. School counselors are always working with their administrators, they're working very closely with the classroom teachers, they work with the families, of course, they work with the students, and they also have community partnerships, as they're going to talk about later in some of the programs that they have too. So, again, the goal is to really engage students in making those plans for what they're going to do after high school, and giving them some success in that arena with the support of another team that's around them. So, they really are kind of the cog in a wheel. They're very important people. Student Support Services Overview, this is just kind of an overview specific to this school district. Each traditional school has six counselors on staff. This is the student counselor ratio currently. Washington was, I was beginning of this year, right? When we looked up?
Based on fall enrollment numbers.
Fall enrollment, yes, fall enrollment. Three hundred and twenty students to one at Washington, Lincoln has three forty to one, Roosevelt four hundred to one. The ASCA, which is the American School Counselors Association, which is kind of our go-to, and we look to them for guidance on ethics and professional standards and such, would recommend a ratio of two hundred and fifty to one. So, we are above the ASCA recommended standard. Each building team also, in addition to these wonderful counselors, includes people like registrar, clerical support. We do have success coordinators who are certified counselors. Those success coordinators work maybe more with the higher needs kids who are struggling a little bit more. And there are also licensed social workers available onsite as well. High school counselors that weren't mentioned in the top, the big three, you know, we have the big three schools, but there are also high school counselors staffed at New Tech High, Joe Foss, and then at still programs as well. So, we do have counselors working with those students in addition to the big three, I guess, as I would call them. Within each, there are kind of three areas that you look at when you're looking at school counseling. Career focus, there's academic focus, and kind of social emotional. And within each of those categories, there's kind of a spectrum of services that you really need to be looking at and offering. And if we just start from the left to the right and go through those, the first thing is a core curriculum, and it's important to have kind of a core curriculum. All ninth grade students get XYZ in career counseling, or this type of supportive social emotional learning, whatever it may be. So, there's curriculum that follows the students throughout the grades, is progressive and builds upon each other. Individual planning is helping students with those self-evaluation pieces, setting goals, what do you want to do after high school, how do we help you work through this emotional problem you're having right now, what can we do to support you? Responsive services, that, of course, is crisis response, which you never know if you're walking the door from day to day when your school counselor, you walk in and you have your day planned out, and nothing gets checked off your list because of what may walk through the door. So, responsive services is crisis response, and then group counseling is in that. Individual and small group counseling are in that category as well. Indirect services, there are a lot, there's kind of a tiny little bit spent on indirect services as well. That's consulting, collaboration, and referrals. So, it might be, you know, they have a referral to the SAT team, how can we help them academically? It might be consulting with the Career Tech Academy on how to get a student out there to take a class, make sure the schedule works best for them, and how can they get back to their activities, because that's important to them, the whole child. So, it's working on those types of things. It might be working with recruiters, and again, these are things I don't want to talk too much about because they're going to talk about in each one of their areas. And then the last is program management, and that's looking at data analysis, program assessments, fair share duties, you know, things like picking up, like the testing. You have to, the counselors pick up testing, and they do a lot of the testing for the district. Again, I'm coming from Minnesota, so help me with the South Dakota's.
Smarter Balance.
Smarter Balance, Smarter Balance is the South Dakota test. I apologize. I'm getting in from Minnesota, so the terms are still coming. But, so they do a lot of program management, and they pick up a lot of things that, kind of it's like, where do we give this, who can we give it to? It doesn't really fit with the math department or the English department. Well, we'll give it to the guidance counselors. So, sometimes they get things that maybe don't always fit best, but they still do them. And that's just what they do because they're part of the team that helps support all the kids in the school. The three areas we're going to focus on today are academics, and I'm not going to read all that to you, college and career, and social emotional. And each one of these wonderful individuals has taken a section, so they're going to kind of go through academics and what are some of the things that are happening in the district in the area of academics, then also college and career, and then finally social and emotional. And then when that's done, we'll kind of wrap it up, and if anybody has any questions, we will allow that. All right? You want me to be your man?
Please.
Okay, all right.
Yes, thank you.
You just wave at me or something.
I'm Dave Myers. I'm one of the six counselors at Lincoln High School. And like Tish was saying, you never know what's going to happen at our school. Today, I had my morning kind of planned, and all of a sudden, yesterday, I had a new student come from Beersford, and today, she went to come out of the car to get her into the building. So, you know, you just work through things like that, and with academics. The goal of, you know, when anybody walks into our building is their high school diploma. As you can see, there's many avenues that a student can do when they come to our building, you know, if it's going to a highly selective school, a tech school, apprenticeship, even some of our students do very well just into the world of work. So, we want to give them a strong foundation of academics when they're in our buildings. The different tasks that we go through is core curriculum, as you can see through the bullet points up there. With the new endorsements that the state delivered to us last year, and we introduce to our students this year, there's four different endorsements that we delivered to the students. And also, that's not on there is students and staff. So, that is something that we did. We talked about the endorsements that the students can attain. There's the high school diploma, there's the career endorsement, there's an advanced endorsement, and advanced honors endorsement. So, students now have four different choices they can choose. So, explaining that to students, and I'm just letting the staff know, was a task that we went through. And also, you can see that we reach all the students in our building, from the RISE program to dual credit, to career internship, and also our accelerated AP programs. So, we want to meet the needs of all the students that walk into our buildings. Individual planning, it's one of my favorite things to do, is working with students individually. If it's selecting courses, talking about their four-year plan, what they want to do when they graduate from our building, things like that are just very important. But also, you can see that we do interventions that sometimes all of our students aren't on pace, and they need some interventions. So, interventions could be working with students and their teachers before school or after school, changing their schedule around a little bit, so maybe their study time is with the teacher that they're struggling with, and just doing little things like that that help them out, that can make them successful and earn credit. Indirect services, what I found, this year is a little bit different at Lincoln High School because we have a ninth grade team, and the teams collaborate one period a day, and they've invited counselors to the team to talk about students and just things that they might need a little extra assistance with. Josh Smith is always running through the counselors' offices, asking about students, what we can do to help them out and so forth. Lots of parent meetings about college planning, academic planning, and also, if things aren't going well, we have the SAT team that we can refer students to. That is the group of staff members that we can work for solutions and see if they need testing, and other things like that. Responsive services, recovery placements, summer school options, that's part of it, but what responsive services for us means is probably the ad room presentations, delivering information to students like for SAT, ACT testing, SAT, pre-ACT, those types of things, course planning, that all can be delivered to students in our ad room presentations. Also, the Bible for referrals is something that is also important. Program management, like Tish said, we do the smarter balance here, and that's a huge task for us in the building. It's just not organizing the test, but we have to be able to train our teachers to deliver that information to the students, that also, when the results come back, we need to know how to interpret that. So, that's part of the smarter balance testing, and it's really important that we know how to do that in the fall when students are applying to schools. Also, last year, we have graduation cohort tracking. Our counselors and principals meet once a week going over the graduation cohorts to see if students are on track for graduation. The school improvement team, giving them suggestions how we can make things better. And also, all the schools have a newsletter that gives out information to parents about testing and things that we offer in our building.
Good question. Question now, or wait?
Sure, we can press that.
I saw dual credit on there, and I think I know what that is. How is concurrent credit different from dual credit?
Yeah, we're offering, so an example of concurrent credit that we're offering now is our teacher pathways program. So, they're earning it in our building with our teachers. So, that's probably our best example right now of concurrent. The hope is that that grows in time. I know there's been talks with University Center and Dakota State.
Is that different than dual credit?
The only difference is that concurrent is our staff teaching, and dual credit is university staff.
Oh, I see. Gotcha. Thanks.
I'll reintroduce myself. I'm Katie Hevlin. I'm at Roosevelt, and I get college and career, and I love this part of it. I like every part that I get to do, but this part to me, I always think about it as chapter in their book. And so, this book of life has started, and that high school chapter is really small, but it creates those next chapters. And so, this becomes a big piece of it. And the thing that you'll see as you go through, and even when Patty goes, all of it kind of crosses over. You can't do social emotional isolated from academics, you can't do college and career isolated from those pieces. And so, you'll see in here that some of the things cross over in the different areas because they are important, and we hit it in different ways. So, college and career ready means that the student is ready for whatever the next step is, and that all the doors remain open. And so, like Dave talked about our new endorsements that are coming, and the piece I love about them is students can pick what doors are open. And those different endorsements open different doors. And a student can have all three of them and have every door open if they want. And so, that's the nice thing about why we talk about this, and we want them to continue to pursue their education and career, whatever that is, after high school. For core curriculum, when we talk about college and career, at the high school level, we have specific curriculum that happens at ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade in relationship to career. Four-year planning of academics, an ability profiler where they get to check out what are they good at, and really start researching careers, and then even that start of that resume writing, activity list, looking at that next step in life. We do J for a day that we helped coordinate PSAT and ACT prep when they're looking at post-secondary education. They're looking towards military, the ASVAB, and what opportunities go that way, and then that financial aid piece. And all those are different elements that we want to make sure all students are introduced to. When we look at the individual, a lot of it happens there when it comes to college careers, what is their plan when they walk out our doors? And so, those individual sessions, graduation meetings, when we talk about our cohort meetings, those a lot of times lead to creating those plans for graduation, and what that looks like, and helping them see what that goal is after when maybe they are struggling with academics. Working on letter of recommendation. Every year, we write them for different things. Resume review, helping families through the financial aid process. So, those students who are wanting to pursue a post-secondary education, if you've pursued those, or you know, you have maybe a child who has, it can be a difficult task when you haven't done it for a while. And so, helping them walk through that, or at least finding someone who can help them. And then the Common App. So, Common App's a specific app for a number of universities across the nation. And so, helping students get those completed when they're wanting to go to those more highly selective universities. And so, meeting those needs of students at all the different levels. When it comes to responsive services, looking at our different groups and how we can help them meet their goals after high school. So, working with our special education on transition presentations and meetings. Trio and Upper Bound, our partnerships we do with our universities, our Board of Regents universities, to help get kids who are more at risk, or maybe haven't experienced college opportunities. Working with our AOF CTE and our new ABERA Academy program, Job Corps and Department of Labor, and then just different presentations depending on the needs of the different students every year. With those indirect services, again, helping them confer with our EL and our SED case managers, making sure that we're meeting those needs of students, working with our advisors and our military and college recruiters to make sure those students have those opportunities, as well as the CTE Academy. And college visits, we've had the opportunity through grants to take kids on visits in the last few years. We had a great opportunity, one of our counselors in our building who works directly with our EL students did a specific trip for them to University Center, so they could see what opportunities were available there. And so, those indirect services to help students. Then program management, all those background things that are happening to help this stuff happen. So, our PSAT, ACT, PSAT, and SAT, new this year, we're adding the NCRC, so schools have started to give that. And then, we had an opportunity at Roosevelt to partner with STI to give the Accuplacer directly at Roosevelt. And so, hopefully, that's something in time we'll be able to expand across all the buildings. Our Career Day, and then all those partnerships and different things, and again, getting information out to families, so through our website and newsletter, communicating all these things that are happening. So, it's one piece of the whole puzzle that is high school counseling. And I'm going to pass it to Patty Laitor.
All right. Thank you. All right. I think we chose wisely. We chose an area that we're pretty passionate about. I love this piece. I've been a school counselor for twenty-eight years, and that sounds like a long time. I said that to my staff earlier this morning, I'm going, twenty-eight years, wow! And eighteen of those years I've been here in the Sioux Falls School District, and I've loved every single moment of it. The social emotional piece within the counseling department starts out from day one, like Tisha talked about, that we are all professional counselors that have chosen school counseling to go into and to serve that focus. That's why I think we have more hours, because we first go that professional counselor route and then go into school counseling. School counselors have unique training, like I just talked about, because we're on the front lines, especially with the social emotional piece, but all within that framework of having the comprehensive school counseling program. And in the twenty-eight years I've been a school counselor, I think that is the biggest change, that before we used to, we had plans, but now it's a very comprehensive plan, following along with the ASCA model as best we can. So, taking it to that big picture of the core curriculum, something that you may not know, that I know that actually a lot of our staff don't realize, is that school counselors are, high school counselors, are in the classroom about twenty-six days out of school year. That's almost a whole month that we will spend in classrooms feeding out information. We go through, we go and work with the English teachers in grades nine, ten, and eleven. For those schools such as Lincoln and Roosevelt that have ad rooms each day, they can go into the ad rooms and present that information. We go into other areas such as positive student interaction classes for both regular ed and special education, students that maybe experience some behavior issues, and working with those teachers, those classes. We work with the Connections class in the summertime. Connections, you probably all know, is that eighth grade to ninth grade transition piece. And in some of the buildings, that's actually school counselors who are running those connection classes are helping with it. Community campus, I think, is also something that's a little bit hidden. We actually go out between the counselors and the social workers, we go out bimonthly. So, every two weeks, we send counselors to perform small group work or work in a larger classroom dealing with social issues. So, those students who are now young adults still have that piece, still have that connection with us. We did place down a few topics, these are just very few topics that we cover, but just to show you the gamut, we talk with our freshmen, the very first time that we go into the classroom, we start with something so simple as how do you make an appointment, or how is lunch going to look, whom am I going to eat lunch with? That's their anxiety, that's their stress, and we start with that. And then we work away with, again, to look at the social emotional piece with test anxiety, stress relievers, teaching the coping skills, all the way to that extent, the art stand of the Ally Cards, which were, which is a program that was developed in the nineteen nineties that deals with allowing students the opportunity to, either maybe they write down their own name, or they write down somebody else's name, that they're concerned or worried about, but being able to say to a counselor, would you call that person down and check them out? It's like I said, nineteen nineties, but it's still running pretty strong in all our schools. So, we get a little bit smaller here with the individual planning, always keeping at the forefront that we want to work with the parents. And so, I know many times we're talking about working individually with students, but rarely is that without having some type of working agreement or relationship with parents. We'll talk about college and career, academic planning, which is kind of funny because we're trying to help them along, and sometimes we cause them stress and anxiety by talking about the future, so that's why that falls under here. And then we also talk about mental health issues such as depression. We talk about health issues such as A D and ADHD with students, helping to do those self-evaluations and suicide prevention, chemical dependency issues, student reentry after a replacement. Now, a good example, that might be coming back from behavioral health after they've stayed there, or perhaps it's coming back from alcohol treatment. Healthy relationships, which we all know ties back into everything. And so, at the forefront of almost everything that we do, we always have some kind of healthy relationship to help the students and families evaluate. Positive choices, making positive choices, especially last five years, digital safety and internet safety, and topics such as study skills. Responsive services, talking again about that individual small group counseling. We start with some of the fun stuff, ambassadors and link crew. Again, at some schools, it is at school counselors that are running those programs, but it starts with day one with incoming freshman, or that student that joins us sometime throughout the school year, so that when they enter our doors, they know that they're welcome, that they're going to have somebody that they're going to eat lunch with, someone that's going to show them around the school, someone that's going to help them get a chrome book, help them get that set up, just those things that just from day one can cause a lot of anxiety. Each one of the high schools performs small groups, and that can change based on need. Healthy relationships, we, as an example, we have empower groups where we co-facilitate with a counselor from Children's Inn that comes in, and we talk about healthy relationships. Teen issue groups is pretty encompassing. The last teen issue group that I did this school year had to do with test anxiety. And so, I had about what I would call about my eight or nine high flyers with test anxiety, and I just offered to them, would you like to get together as a group and go through this? And they were like, yes, I'd like to know somebody else that's going through this. And so, it just kind of takes that pressure and stress out, making ideas from each other. Unfortunately, we have support groups on an ASME basis, Gay Straight Alliance support groups, which tend to now move a little bit more almost into the club rather than support group. And another example of small groups might be translator culture groups. That is a group where we have American-born students and foreign-born students that come together and are learning about leadership, with their accumulation at the end, having some type of, throughout the year, being able to show that those leadership skills, maybe going to the community and talking to people, flash and show, try to get a couple of them there. Again, adding to the student parent sessions, we have a great alliance with Southeastern Behavioral Health and Alouken Social Services with their path counseling, with making referrals to those two entities where they actually do have counselors that will come in to the schools and help out. We make DSS referrals, VAIR referrals, Bible for, and all the counselors are trained in crisis management. Indirect services, now this gets more into that collaboration, we do sit on SAT teams, Bible for teams, IP teams, we are consultants for SED and EL, case managers, when they're giving help with the social emotional pieces with students. Communication with staff administrators, those are those LSA agencies are pretty important to us, we try to continually work on improving that. And then, our last component is the program management. So, we'll work with, talking especially with our administrators about what's the topic that seems to be getting the most attention, either in our public or with our students, what are their needs? Is there someone that we can assemble, have some type of assembly discussing those issues, that might be small group, it might be large, or the whole school? Again, working as an advisor for Ambassador and Link Crew, small group coordination. We are mandatory reporters, and so, staff is able to come to us, and we'll take it that next step, you know, with staff with that. I'm going to jump over website, come back to that and with that. And then making sure that we're getting our information out in the newsletter. The reason I jumped over the website management is because, and I don't know, Katie, Dave probably knows this, I go out to their websites all the time. I'm hoping they come out to my website, or our website once in a while, because that is where we put so much of our information. If a parent would call me up and say, I understand that you're in my ninth grader's classroom today, what did you talk about? I'll say, go out to our website, we have it out there, so that you can see the information that the students are getting. And then it just varies, all the way from information about scholarships, the endorsements that Dave was talking about earlier, to information about test anxiety, information about who are the college recruiters that are going to be here that week. Those websites are a keyling for us, and we encourage parents at every turn, please go out there, take a look at what we have on our website. There we go. And so, this is where we end our presentation. I guess the last thing that we wanted you to know is that we do align ourselves with the high school, with the school in what their ambition is, is that it all is based around supporting that student, that family, what their academic needs, and anything surrounding that student that they do need. And that is all done through school counseling, comprehensive school counseling program. And that is all done through school counseling, comprehensive school counseling program. So I think at this point, we're done. Do you have any questions?
Do all those high schools, do they split them by alphabet, or do some specialize, or how is that? I know Lincoln, that's why I asked about the other school, yeah.
We do, at each one of the high schools, the three schools, we break it up by alphabet. And then within that, we also have all the programs that we are working with, and then we'll break it down by counselor assignment.
Okay.
And so we go through that every semester.
I think, and I would think the only thing that would vary is Roosevelt actually went to one counselor serving our EL students.
That's what I was gonna ask, yeah.
And so that, there's the other programming things, but for those more, those larger groups, we do have one counselor who serves that population specifically.
And I think that's just true of Roosevelt.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I was wondering, I don't know how long that program has been with alphabetizing, but with now the changing of, you know, four different pathways, as well as like at Lincoln, we have Spanish immersion or honors and everything. Has there been a thought or a process of like switching that up a bit where some counselors become more special, so that they can help those kids who might have different needs, whether it be EL or, you know, Spanish? Somebody who's going to Harvard versus somebody going to USD, for example.
We do talk about that every single year, about can we do this better? We've been to other high schools, we'd like to visit more schools to see what they're doing. And there's some pros and cons to that. You know, the one good thing about us not doing that is that all six counselors do know what's going on in the building, and any parent that they're working with, they can access that information. If I do not feel as comfortable about a topic, I'll grab that counselor that is, because most of us do specialize in certain areas, and then I grab that counselor and say, come over here, let's figure this out. But we have talked about that as we gain more programs, such as that, with that, now that works really well, as I was on high school with their EL population. Washington High School, I cannot imagine one or even two counselors being in charge of the whole EL population, so.
And that particular counselor has maintained a traditional load as well, as part of his case load.
That's true.
So it's not just EL students that he serves, and so it's that balance. The other advantage that I have found, I've been at Roosevelt for eleven years now, and one of the things I find is some of those families, I've had eleven years. And so being able to know their history and their stories, and them not having to learn it with someone new every time. I have the fifth child who's graduating this year of one of my families. And so it's been fun to see that family grow and listen to, and they actually just adopted a five-year-old. So I'm like, okay, I'm gonna see you in about nine years, you know, but it's fun to have built that part of the relationship piece. But we do, we have, I think all three buildings have this conversation a lot of, is there a better way to do it?
Yeah, I guess if you were like just working seniors and doing college, post-secondary stuff, that counselor would be writing a lot of requirers.
Well, I don't mean that way.
So now it's always dispersed, you know what I mean? So we've talked about it also with these two, so that's kind of where it boils back down to.
I guess then, I like that people are using other resources in the building, because I feel like sometimes, what I've heard anyways, some things fall through the cracks. You know, like somebody didn't know if they took an online course, they weren't eligible for D1 college, or, you know, somebody missing a certain test date and that. So it's like, just making sure, 'cause I can't imagine, I mean, just to, I knew there were six counselors, but then to see the number with that, you know, I just can't imagine how you're keeping up with everything. And so it's just making sure there's a good relationship amongst all of you to use each other.
That's kind of what my question was, so how do you, how do you handle the nuances of, I've got a student who graduates on Sunday, is gonna go to work on Monday. I've got a student who's going to go to STI. I've got a student who's going to go to USD. I've got a student that's going to the University of Nebraska, hopefully. I've got a student who's going into the Ivy League, and all of the, all of the differences that have to take place to, how do you, how do? What train, what training do we do, if the superintendent would know that? What training do we do so that students don't, don't fall through the cracks?
It is a good point, I mean, that key to that is that collaboration piece, with not just all of the counselors that are within the building, but that we are working with each other. And that none of us would hesitate calling another school and saying, anything as simple as saying, hey, can one of our students come over and take your ACT prep class? Two, like you're talking about, okay, I'm working with students who are going to Harvard, and I need some help, because I know that you had a student that just went to Harvard last year, that type of thing, and so.
And we do have monthly meetings where all the counselors, high school counselors get together too. We'll bring in people like, we've had dual credit, people come in and talk a little bit about the changes in dual credit and what that looks like. So we try to bring people into those meetings too. And also, I think like some of your higher level schools have like a breakfast in the fall that you can go and hear more a little bit about some of the, you know, the standards or the changes that they're having for their entrances and things like that. I know we had, like you mentioned, Nebraska. We had a counselor who I think was on a.
Was it for Nebraska?
Yeah, went down there and was on part of a community admissions committee. So we try to stay current just through outreach too, with them and bringing people in, so it's kind of both. We go out and get professional belt, and we have them come in and train us, and sometimes it's trying to get on some of those committees at U M or U N L, or some of those bigger higher state schools, so.
And I think the great thing you'll find, the nice thing, and I always tell people this, the six people are all very different in each of the buildings, which is actually the best part of it. We have one who came onto our staff this year, and he's got a background in career advising. He worked at Aggie. And so we had a couple of students who were applying to Ivy Leagues, and we're like, could you look at the resumes? And he took that piece on, because he's had that background in looking at that type of stuff. And so we use each other's strengths to help all the students. It is a balancing game every day. We were just saying, we're talking about how our days go and you have that list, but you never know what walks through the door, and who needs that immediate service.
And I think Katie's right, it's building those, the right teams in each school, because again, you don't wanna build a team, just throw out a sports analogy, that's all catchers. You're not gonna win the World Series if you have a team of catchers, you know, everybody needs to have kind of their area of specialty and what they do well, and the other team members need to know they can rely on them for those things. That's the person who went out, got some training in this area, and you know that you can go to them for that support, so it's very much a team approach.
I have a question. So my daughter is a freshman, she walks into your building, and you've maybe met her once or twice, 'cause she's brand new to your building. When she comes to your office, what is, what kind of things do we have in place from a system perspective that would let you look at her and say, okay, this is what I know about you? You're a freshman, you're in X program, this is what you wanna be when you grow up, if you know, this is what your plans are after college? Because I would feel like I'm a nurse by trade, and we track our patients, I mean, from the time they're born until the end, and so we know like all these things about them, and I feel like we track our students, right? So how would you know that about a student when they come to visit you, or how do you get to know that, and then where do you document that, so you don't have to re-get to know your three hundred, four hundred students every time they meet them?
And repeat the questions each year.
So do we have something in the system that is like a notes place, that you can say, oh, I'm meeting with Riley Ryder, and I know she wants to be a teacher, and I know that she wants, you know what I mean, like, is there something that you guys have?
Well, there's a, okay, so when you're talking about especially career and academic, working with SD my life, which has now turned to a program called Zella. That we start actually in the middle school with that program, and so we would go to their account, log in, take a look at their career matchmaker. And we can keep notes, a student can keep notes in there. So we, so working with that, just going to Infinite Campus, looking at seeing what the closing activities that they're involved with. So those pieces are easy to find out. And then I think then pass that, it is up to the individual counselor, what type of notes that they keep on their students.
And is there a place in Infinite Campus where you could take notes on a student, and then that student steps in to see you today for whatever reason, that you can easily access, without having to go to like South Dakota my life and like kind of scan the whole thing to figure something out about them? Or it's more of like your anecdotal things, or your, you know what I mean, like, is there a place for something like that?
I think that for confidentiality reasons, we would not have that someplace where other people could see that, you know, that information. And so perhaps on Infinite Campus, we keep something in the contact log, if I had contact with the parents, and what type of issue it might be, you might have something like that in the contact log. But again, I think it is up to more of the individual counselor, what kind of notes they would take. A good example of that would be kind of like you said anecdotal, when I, when students make appointments, and something that we did cover is that most students will make it, and we encourage students to make appointments before and after school and during the lunchtimes. We've talked about for how many years, we haven't had lunch until about one thirty-two o'clock in the day, but that's okay, 'cause that's where we see students. And so you'll see in those appointments, counselors may have it color-coded, and they have some information there too, but yeah, yeah. But no one place that says something like counselor notes where we keep that information.
What would you like to see as, I mean, obviously besides the workload diminish, but what trainings or information or software for like keeping track? What are things that, as a district, that could support you?
Well, that would be the whole mother presentation.
There is, there is, we have looked at, it's been a couple of years again, but there is software out there that does help you do some of those pieces and help you maintain the confidentiality piece. And I think for us, that's important, to maintain that with students, that we're building that relationship. But there is software, there's those things available. We do take advantage of our state. We've, quite a few staff members have actually served on both our State School Counseling Association Board and then the just Counseling Association Board. Patty and I are both former members of the boards. I don't think you're on right now, are you?
No.
Thank me to the break. But they offer a fall conference that a number of counselors attend that's specific for school, and then a spring one. And the great thing about the spring one is it moves, but we can connect with our mental health counselors in the state. And that's a big piece for us too, but those are two trainings we can take advantage of that are offered in our state for us. There's a national conference, I believe two years ago, that we sent, is there eighteen of us?
I was gonna say, it was just under twenty.
Yeah, that went to Denver for the national conference, 'cause it was so close. It's hard, 'cause that conference moves to Oliver. But there's opportunities out there to gain and specific things. And I think right now, we're both serving on the ACT board for the state. And so there's lots of ways to do it, and lots of opportunities for professionals.
We're pretty fortunate that, especially like with Tisha's position, that we won't hear about a lot of trainings that are going on in the state. Can be quite honest, it comes out of time. I mean, we probably, seriously, we could probably be gone every week, going to some type of training in the state, but, or outside state, but we just wouldn't want to do that, take that out of time. But all of that helps, any kind of additional training.
And sometimes we'll send one to try to, and then share back to our buildings.
Information.
Yeah.
Would it be beneficial to have, you know, the incident that you talked about, the girl that didn't want to come in? Would it be beneficial to have a person that took care of that kind of instance, so that it didn't pull away from your day?
I prefer doing it, 'cause I'd kind of build a relationship with her the day before.
Okay.
So I want to continue with it, and our freshman advisor also is aware of it, so we were kind of on top of it by the way. The student could, other activities that I have planned, I just put them on hold, and they understood them, so.
A lot of those individuals that are in the school long-term, some of the higher gates, the success coordinator at each one of the high schools, working very closely with as well. So usually it's somebody that's gonna be in the building in much of a role of a counselor or the success coordinator that has that relationship. 'Cause a lot of the admin, and not derogatory at all, can be a five-minute counselor at best. Something that's gonna go longer, and I have to tell Patty that, that, you know, by cameras all been a few minutes, it needs to go somebody they can. But those success coordinators and counselors are usually the ones that will go over to help those individual students and be able to be the most effective with them, because they've built a relationship that isn't based in the academics always, and isn't based in discipline like it would be with the principal.
One really beneficial thing that happened in the last few years was one, us giving social workers, but even in this year now, we have our own social workers to our buildings to help with some of those things. And that has been a great help, just another person who is trained uniquely to work with people in crisis.
How many average do you have per building, social workers?
One.
One, okay.
There's one success coordinator at each of the high schools, the social workers based out of the high school, but will also work with some other schools.
At Roosevelt, that's one just because of numbers, the others, one, but they're shared with the other.
That was the success coordinator at each's.
So I had a, one thing that kind of caught my attention was you had mentioned under the academics, program management, smarter balance. So could you explain that a little bit to me more? I mean, do you guys, are you responsible for scheduling the, maybe just elaborate?
Yeah, there's like four days that are set aside for smarter balance, and we do it in the mornings. So we built the schedule for the whole school, just not for the students that are testing, but for the other three grade levels, the ninth and tenth graders, our seniors don't have to be in the building. But then there's the training part of the staff that administer the tests that takes some time, and with Chromebooks, there's always some issues that pop up, things aren't working and things like that, so we need to troubleshoot and just go through them types of items. When we first started with the Chromebooks, there was just issue after issue, but things have gotten a lot better, so it works pretty smooth, but there's just a lot of coordination, a lot of planning, talking to those teachers in case something does happen. Then we have to get the students in the building to test, and sometimes that can be an obstacle, and if they don't come and test, and we still have to run them down, they do have to test, so.
There's the back, I think, believe each of our buildings has a counselor who is kind of our testing person. A few years ago, we tracked it, they spend about a hundred hours dealing with that one piece of their world. But I can, I assist, so I can't speak for our person totally, but we double-check accommodations for special ed in there, schedule rooms, EL as well, scheduling rooms. And then the other activities that go along with it, 'cause the freshmen and sophomores are doing other things during those days.
We're working with our administrators, but Katie is right, I think if you ask us what is one thing that we do that probably, it's amazing how many hours I spend, is testing.
Somebody mentioned, which I was excited to hear, about building-wide activities that you use for like team building and so forth, and, you know, as our diversity changes, I think that's just even more and more important for our buildings. What are examples of those that you do, and do you share amongst the three buildings too, to kind of help, if one is successful, that they can use that?
And you were talking about with the diversity.
Well, just any team building activities building-wide that kind of hope to bring them together with the school, so then to bring down barriers between different groups.
So, you know, kind of going back to the transit, as a culture and working with that small group, we're trying to take that, what larger arena about celebrating diversity. I know years, years ago, we did Warrior Faces, where each month we were celebrating a different group within the school, and that has morphed into celebrating it in different ways. Usually coming more through the club aspect than it is through the day-to-day, yeah. So I'd say that, you know, helping our clubs to promote anything and everything that they can do, usually before and after school, helps bring those bonds together. I think that when we talk about our link crew and our ambassadors, they are a huge piece of that, bringing that together. I know if you look at each of our schools, like our ambassador group, it's extremely diverse, it's meeting every need. We have especially two or three students that are very quiet, very shy, they will tell you, very introverts, but we need them, because part of those students that come to the door would not feel, feel good working with somebody who's a little bit more out there and very talkative, so. But that's a little bit highlight, I think, on others.
No, I think that's, one of the big programs that'll be coming up that every building does is something called I Think Big.
I Think Big?
I Think Big, and that'll happen during our testing days, and every building, including New Tech, hopes that. And that's really looking at those barriers and those things that hold students back from being successful, and them just, you know, facing those things, and how are they gonna move forward? It's an awesome presentation actually to listen to.
Then we bring all the eighth graders to our buildings, the twenty-second or twenty-third, that's coming up right around the corner. So all of our feeder schools will be in our buildings for about hour and thirty minutes, and break them up into small groups, so they get a kind of, they see some of our upperclassmen that are on student council, our society, and things like that, and they get to meet them, we can talk about our school and so forth like that, so.
All right, any, any other questions?
I have one more question. I'm really curious about dual credit, and I feel like we have our AP students and then we have our dual credit, and I would love to know how or what ideas you guys have, or how can you give that education to like seventh and eighth graders before they get to high school? Because I'm finding that a lot of times, counselors are guiding students to take classes that could be used for dual credit if they would wait to take them when they were juniors or seniors. And so when they come in and then they find out about dual credit, that they've already taken speech, and they've already taken some of those classes, then those are kind of off limits for them. And so how can we educate families on the options that they might be interested in, especially if you know that they're a college-bound student, and that's going to be a financial impact to them that would be positive? Thoughts on that?
I think going through career curriculum update would be huge for us. We have done that through the years, but we know that there's been so many things added on. Um, we have done that through the years, but we know that there's so, been so many things added on in just the last three to four years, that that would help tremendously, especially in those early years. That analogy is the same that we talk about all the time about trying to, um, counsel students on what they should do in college and take in college. And that's, that's a little scary for me to start talking and telling students, even though I have three in college right now, it's scary for me to do that. I can only imagine what it must feel like for a middle school counselor, to say, well, you should do this and this and this. And so, it is that. And then that, having that time that you were talking about earlier, so that we can work and collaborate with that and help.
We have a work group that's set up this spring with these, these three and New Tech. And then we're bringing in, um, middle school counselors from each middle school. And we're going to work together on what does need to be taught in middle school to make sure they're ready to go when these guys come to do their presentations about what happens in ninth grade, just to make sure we're not missing things or there's gaps in what's going on. So we do have a work group that's going to be meeting this spring and starting to kick that off, just to make sure that we are addressing things like that. And anything else that we might have gaps in, just to make sure that that's a smooth transition and, and kids are coming in ready, they're ready to roll in high school, so. So we are working towards that.
I know that we have our eighth grade parent meetings in January. I know in our building that we talked about A P, but maybe we need to talk about dual credit at that same time.
All right. Thank you. So what do y'all do in the afternoon? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got, uh, need to open up for public input specifically on, uh, school counseling services. If there's anyone here who wishes to address that. If not, we will move on to, um, the next agenda item, dual immersion program.
Okay, all right. Um, good afternoon. Just, could I give you a high-level look at dual immersion? It's on the docket for Monday night for report, but just want to give some time to ask questions. Um, and Smith and I worked, um, hard on putting together information that'd be relevant and then opening up for questions you might have, um, and we can both answer those questions. So Spanish dual immersion. And why are we looking at that? You know, we always like to start with a why. And if we looked back, um, in two thousand nine, there was a board report given and we had one thousand two hundred and twenty-one E L students at that time. And only four hundred and fifteen of those were Spanish families. And today we have almost twenty-six hundred E L families and close to a thousand of them are Spanish. So when we look at dual immersion, the time is right. Um, because our Spanish population has grown enough where we can have those nat- native Spanish speakers in the classrooms with our English speakers. And, um, so, and then the longitudinal study, we always go to Thomas and Collier because they are, um, rich in their research on dual immersion. And it helps both sets of students, um, when you teach in another language and help them, um, to develop that proficiency. So what's happened since then? Um, we have Sonia Sotomayor, that one-way Spanish immersion because the, all the families in that program, or all the students in that program are English-speaking, um, so that's their L one. And so, looking at, um, we have that full curriculum, those kids are in tenth grade now, um, that, of that first class. And we really see evidence that there is a high interest in our community for bilinguistic. Currently, we have sixty preschoolers in our program, so we know there's more than that out there. But in our programs, we have sixty students who speak Spanish in the home. And when we're looking at dual immersion, we're looking at two different sites, we're looking at Rosa Parks and Hayward. And currently, we have fourteen in the Hayward attendance area. And this year at Hayward, thir- they have thirteen students in kindergarten that are, um, Span- identified as Spanish-speaking, um, E L students. And then at Rosa Parks, um, we have four in preschool right now, but in their current kindergarten class identified as E L, there's twelve students. So that's a little bit of history there. So our proposal is to introduce that two-way immersion at Hayward and Rosa Parks. So that's that, um, two languages within that classroom for next fall. And then add a grade every year, so then those kids, and you know, they would promote to first grade, second grade. And then that pathway would merge together in middle school, um, with our, with our one-way immersion program. All those kids could be merged together. So here's some, um, research. Most of the dual immersion, you know, you can go, they're back to nineteen seventies. And dual immersion started in our title of buildings with low S E S, um, and students, and how do they progress? And it's really hard to see that bottom line there, I'm sorry. But by the end of, when they start those assessments in third grade, you can see, so the green line is the students that are in the, in the regular classroom. And the red line is the students that are in the dual immersion program. And so they're in the same school, um, but they have two different pathways. Um, the students with that dual immersion are outperforming their peers that are just in the regular classroom that we would see in any typical elementary right now. So one-way versus two-way, what's the best way to do that? Um, right now, we have the one-way model at Sonia Sotomayor, where they all come from one background. And then we're suggesting that we do a two-way immersion. And in that two-way immersion, you need to have at least thirty-five percent of those students in that native language. And Spanish is a natural fit for us. Like I said, we have the curriculum already created, um, the teachers have done that hard work of trans-adapting that curriculum. So we're ready to go with that. Ninety-ten is the one-way, so they introduced that, um, targeted instruction. Ninety percent of the time, literacy is a high need for all K one. And they moved towards fifty-fifty in fourth grade, and that's at Sonia Sotomayor, where they introduce, in third grade, they introduce that English language parts for them. In the two-way immersion, the fifty-fifty for the dual immersion, what we'll do is we'll have, they will get Spanish instruction for E L A and they will get English instruction for E L A. And so they'll get that, um, every day to help promote both languages. So I might struggle if my L one is Spanish, I might struggle in that English piece. But if, uh, my L one is English, I'm going to probably struggle in that Spanish speed piece. So they can support, the students can support each other. Um, the recommended model, two-way immersion, so we're going to have two classrooms. We'll have one English teacher, a teacher that's, her L one is English. And we'll have a Spanish native speaking teacher in that other classroom. That teacher will have that same level of proficiency that we expect for our teachers at, um, Sonia Sotomayor. The mix of students will be fifty-fifty. Um, so we'll, you know, if we have a classroom with twenty students with the native Spanish speakers, our goal is to have ten English, ten Spanish students, and the same thing in the English. And then those students will switch throughout the day. Um, so I'll have half of my day with the Spanish teacher and the other half of the day with the English teacher. Who will teach the subjects? They will both teach those subjects. Now, I really sent, I don't want to oversimplify it, but, um, today if I have my math le- lesson with, um, Teresa Boyson and English, then tomorrow I'm going to have less math lesson number two with my Spanish teacher. So we're not duplicating that, but they have to be, they have to be partners. We said they, that collaboration between those two teachers has to be really strong. So that way, we know where I left off today, so I can pick up tomorrow with you. Um, and we will monitor their progress with the stamp, which we do do in, um, with our other Spanish students. And we'll give that assessment in grades five, seven, eight, and ten. This year, we're giving it in ninth grade, um, to our ninth graders. And we'll give it from here on out, that will be the progression starting next year. And then we will monitor the E L students' progress through the W I D A assessment, which is giving annually. Why fifty-fifty? Um, when we look at that, um, uh, we know that we need that instruction for a minimum of six years. And once they have, you know, they get through fifth grade, we believe that proficiency level will be there for them. And they will have no problem moving into that middle school model. We're going to focus on core academic curriculum. We have a quality language arts instruction in both languages already. We have that built for us. We're going to use the targeted language at least fifty percent of the time. We're going to add that second language in there. And we have the support of the admin, the teachers, the parents. And that will be a great thing for those students, you know, and when we know these kids can walk out of high school, um, with that seal of bilinguistic, we know that they could walk into the job market and get a, a, a job right away, um, that would be a good-paying job with benefits. Or they can walk right into that full secondary too. So we have high-quality instruction. We're going to, we, we'd like to have active parent participation, um, for those that would like to be involved. And, and when we look at ninety-ten or fifty-fifty, the models get really mixed. So we know most models out there are fifty-fifty. Um, not very many districts have a ninety-ten model, there are some out there, but more so fifty-fifty. So they, the research gets blended that way. But we know that each model produces high qual- um, high-quality language development for the students. Um, so preparation, you know, we've been looking at this, working on this, talking about this, um, for a long time. We had a visit scheduled for Omaha in November and we had to cancel that, so that's rescheduled for March eighteenth. We've, um, we had a group go down to the dual immersion conference in North Carolina. That was admin, coaches, teachers. And then we've had focus groups with, um, the posse members, the Spanish families at both Hayward and Rosa Parks, um, the English families at both locations, and then staff at both Hayward and Rosa Parks also. And the response, um, both parent groups, very, very excited, um, excited for the opportunity for the students. And just to hear, um, Spanish families do just thankfulness of, um, that they know once their kids come to school, they start to lose their Spanish language, and they're thankful that, for the opportunity that they will continue to grow that language. Um, and then the English families, excited about the opportunities for their schools. The teachers, excited, um, apprehensive, you know, I s- they said it's groundbreaking work. This is a new program and, and for those that have been through the ten years with, um, the Spanish immersion at Sonia Sotomayor, they know being that first group is hard work, you're the pioneer. And so, um, excited and making sure that we have the supports in place for them. And we have that K twelve instructional coach, we have the curriculum, we have the admin, um, so we're there to support them in that ende- in that endeavor. So what are our next steps? Looking forward to kindergarten registra- well, the board report on Monday night first. And then kindergarten registration on May twenty-eighth. Um, looking to have, with approval, um, looking to have a, a table set up with information for families at those two schools. So that way, any family that's interested can pick up that information and then have parent informational meetings, larger group, because we had very focused, very targeted focus groups. So they were small, um, but then to get it out there to anybody that's interested in wanting to come look. And then we'll post those jobs because we want to make sure we have a good fit for the English teacher in that classroom and then the Spanish, um, teacher also. So when we look at dual alert, dual language programs, students from different languages backgrounds learn together while instruction is systematically delivered in two languages. Students read, write, listen, and speak in both languages, becoming bilingual, bilinguistic, bicultural, while working towards grade-level academic achievement. Dual language offers an opportunity for students to add another language while at the optimal age for language learning. It's a perfect opportunity for kids to start at kindergarten, um, and work through, all the way through twelfth grade, and then take it on into their future. And when we look at cracking the code of literacy, um, our teachers at Sonia Sotomayor will say, these kids can crack the code on reading in Spanish by Christmas. And that just helps them build that pathway to crack the code in English. Because in Spanish, the letter is the letter is the sound, where in English, this letter means two or three different things, so. We're very excited about the dual immersion program and the opportunities it can bring for the students who support. Question? Yes, you go ahead.
And you're on.
You said two, so you said two classrooms? Two classrooms at each site? Correct. Okay. Because you'll have your English-speaking teacher and your Spanish teacher. So what, twenty kids in each classroom, so forty cla- forty students at each site. Um, they'll, you know, they say the least you want to have is thirty-five of one language, um, to make that nice plan. So, and do we know, well, we don't know, um, what the enrollment will be. But will it be lighter than first year? I don't know. Or will it be so many we have to turn them away?
Follow-up?
Yeah, and so that was actually what my question, my follow-up was, if we don't fill it up within building, will there be open enrollment within district for those?
Yes, if there's building capacity, yes.
Would we reach out to perhaps the, um, families that were not selected as part of the lottery for Sonia?
And we want to make sure, our goal, and that's when we were very clear with that with the staff at both buildings, that our goal is to serve their community first and our E L families first, um, because that's the, the purpose of this program. But we need both groups to come to the table to have the program run, so, yes.
So I think my questions, um, I fully support dual immersion and I am excited about the opportunity. I think my hesitation is that I feel like we're a few months maybe later than what would be optimal for kicking something off for this fall. Um, and so when I think about the timeline, I think about the following fall, just because then you could have a lot of things in place. You could have information meetings during the school year, maybe line it up more closely with some of the timelines that we have for the full immersion program so that people know and understand. Um, I want to make sure that the program is the best that it can be because I know that it can be phenomenal and I a hundred percent agree with the benefits and I, I know that. So it makes me a little bit nervous to think that we're going to st- just kind of now start recruiting students for it. Um, also having kind of been in one of the first couple grades or the first couple of groups, I just want to make sure we have all of our curriculum. I know it exists for Sonia, but it's different with dual, just because you have to teach in English and be very intentional about English, where they're doing ninety percent in Spanish. And so they have their Spanish curriculum and they have their spoken sequence and they have all that stuff. So how does that look to change, to inter- tweet, inter- what am I trying to say? To add like the English pieces? And so I just want to make sure that when we start with something, that it is like the best that it can be that very, very first year. And so for me, this feels like, ah, it's, it's March and we have kindergarten registration in three weeks and we still have, I feel like there's still things to do. And I don't know that because I haven't seen anything, but.
And that's a, that's a good point. Um, we have the curriculum, we're ready to go with that curriculum piece. Um, it's getting the teachers hired, um, and, you know, there, some of them are in our houses already. Um, but getting them in place so they can start to work together, because that's where that piece is going to come together. We have the curriculum, but it's, um, if you and I are the teachers, then we have to come together and really define that. And that's where, um, the four teachers and Andy, our instructional coach, will really work together to lay that out. But even the two teachers at Rosa Parks and the two teachers at Hayward, um, are going to have just a little bit different approach. Not in, in how it's structured, but how we work together. And that's the, um, beauty of getting that piece together and ready to go. So, and we have time to do that.
My hesitation is I don't want this to be like a week by week we're looking at, you know what I mean, and so.
Nope, and it won't be. It won't be. So, um, that's where we've had some conversations with some of the teachers and they said, will they be able, you know, because they're at the table going, I might want to be that teacher in that kind of, you know, I might want to be the teacher in that English classroom. So will I have time to work this summer with? Yes, you know, and will we support that? Yes, we will support that because we know they need to. And will we get them down to see a dual immersion program? Yes, we will get them down to see a dual immersion program. Um, we just want to make sure that they're aligned very specifically and they're ready to go. And is that?
Yeah, and I think that, um, it, one of the big advantages that we have, when you think about the curriculum and think about the English side of it, we have a lot of experience teaching English as a second language for our E L program. So, so that is being blended in with that. But we're using the curric- the curriculum right now is probably the most solid piece that we have of this. It really. It really is, like Teresa says, getting those teachers together, and the beauty of that is, we have Omaha, which uses the same curriculum that we use. It's not only the same model, it's the same curriculum, and we've already been working with them for a lot of the trans-adaptation that we've done of collaborative classroom for Sonia Sotomayor, so we have that resource available to us.
That's exciting work.
Any other questions? So you feel like you're ready to go?
We are.
It's go time.
It's go time.
Okay. I was, well, the only board member that was here when we started the Spanish immersion program with one kindergarten classroom at Rosa Parks, and in my wildest dreams, I could not have expected that in 11 years' time, we would have a brand-new elementary school dedicated specifically to the Spanish immersion program. So I think as a district, our track record with this kind of an innovative program speaks clearly for itself, and I think offering this opportunity, particularly at Hayward, to kids that wouldn't have an opportunity like this, because their folks don't have jobs where they can get them to Sonia Sotomayor, they don't have the advantages that a lot of our students at Sonia have, and this to me is another step to help those students that could be viewed as marginalized to be right at the same point that some of our kids who have those advantages are at. So to me, it's the right thing to do. I hope that I'm still alive at least when we begin a Lakota immersion program in our school district. I doubt that I'll be on the school board then, but I'd like to see us continue to look at what the possibilities are. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Public input on dual immersion. All right, we have none. Board committee reports.
Sports authority is getting pretty geared up for the Summit League and all the other initial basketball games that are going on out at the Denny Sanford and at the Pentagon, so that's exciting. No PTA report, and I'll let Cynthia talk about insurance.
I had start met last week, the same time we had a board meeting, so I was not able to attend that, and policy, we did not meet, because we had a bunch of policies that had no changes to them, so we'll see those come up for review, revise on Monday. That's all I have.
Education Foundation, good meeting. I think I gave you the date, in November 14th for the signature fundraiser. They're meeting today right now, actually, I did choose a name for that, so we'll have a name, so I won't be just calling it the signature fundraiser. The Beryl House fundraiser is April 29th for the Sioux Falls Education Foundation. Teacher Appreciation Week is May 6th through the 10th, and they're looking to do something where people can donate $25 and write a note to a teacher maybe that was influential to them or their children as a fundraiser through Sioux Falls Education Foundation, and, let's see the rest, we already know about the groundbreakings, that. Grants are in, they're reviewing them now for the educational innovation grants, and we have less grant applications than last year, however, many more were group grants, so like six teachers got together, or six autism teachers got together and wrote grants, so really, there's not a concern on that, it's just more people are doing more team ones and going for the higher dollar amounts on that. See, the insurance committee met, and everything looks great, everything's on, it's a joke between Todd and I, but it is going great, but the, I talked to Becky right before this meeting to see, ask if she's had any concerns about switching on our supplemental insurance, and she said, no, it's been smooth, and with the option of people being able to stay with their current app, like, it's been great, so, let's see. And then calendar committee, we met, and we should be bringing a calendar to vote after all the snow days and everything, but I think we came to a, almost unanimous decision, I think, on what the calendar will be for the 2021, 2021 calendar, so hopefully no more snow days, so we can also finalize this year's calendar.
Chamber board met last Wednesday, and actually, that was the day that the legislature voted not to offer driver's license exams in both Spanish and English, so we did have a fair amount of discussion about that at chamber board. I'm glad to see that our school district and school board is at least a teeny bit more progressive than our legislature seems to be, but the chamber is working hard to make sure that workforce development continues to improve and do everything that we can toward that end. The Southeast Tech, we haven't had another policy meeting since our last board meeting, and we'll be getting our Southeast Tech meeting underway here at four o'clock. Budget in the school district and at Southeast Tech are, both are working hard to get budgets ready, and we'll be having our initial review of all of that a week from tomorrow, so lots of work going on.
Calendar Cynthia talked about, she talked about policy and path, we have not met, we, our meeting got canceled earlier and I think maybe next week. Hello? I have it on my calendar for both Thursday and next week, so one of the next two Thursdays we meet, and I think that's all I have.
Okay. Anything else to come before the board? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
We are adjourned, thank you all.